Region healthcare chaplain needs us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we thank you for today and the many blessings it contains. Another day in which we have the privilege to glorify you through serving others. We thank you for our city government and the men and women that serve. Another day to live out their calling into vocational leadership on our behalf. For our family, friends, and community. Father, we thank you for entrusting them with this high calling. May they seek to honor you with their words, their actions, and their plans. Tonight, as we gather, may we re-center ourselves and refocus ourselves on the tasks set before us. May we take this opportunity to learn. Open our minds and our hearts to receive what you have for us tonight. Giving us wisdom and discernment in when to act, when to stay still. May this meeting strengthen us as individuals, as a council, and as a city. And may we be encouraged, stretched, and challenged, and inspired. Lord, we pray for unity in our purpose. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
It is 5:30, January 3rd, 2023, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Our first item of business is approval of the agenda.
I think in light of the the request that just came on 31/24, do we want to talk about that now before we approve the agenda?
Yes.
That would dictate where the agenda goes, if that's all.
Yep. Yeah, I think that now be if there's an if there's a motion to approve the agenda, we can have the discussion if the motion fails passes.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
So the motion is to approve the agenda that has been presented to the public. Any discussion on that?
Obviously, I would like to talk about 31/25.
Yeah, please do.
I mean, obviously, in light of obviously what Mr. Frank has brought up. Obviously, we've all got the language in front of us, and it says at its first regular meeting in January. And I would concur that this is the first regular meeting in January. You know, when you look at you know, today, you know, in Washington and St. Paul, you know, was a lot of Congress and senators that got appointed. And, you know, they didn't have a transitional day. So, you know, the federal government can do that transition. And, you know, the state government can do that. And so I would ask that we review the language. You know, and it's to some extent, I don't know what's less clear than at at its first regular meeting in January. The council shall in order herein stated and prior to commencing its regular order of business, recognized by having all new offices and officials take and subscribe their oath of office. I think it's fairly clear in that language, and we we have done this before. When the language has been challenged in in that. And we obviously haven't. I talked to Andrew about this on Friday, and the Charter Commission is looking at at this language to to basically make it clearer. But I think as it sits today, I don't know. If this is not the first regular meeting in January, then I think we should have posted it as differently. And I don't think there's anything on the agenda that at some point, you have to have the transition from obviously one council to the next council in terms of its membership. And I and I don't know. I don't know how do we define that line as such. I mean, but, you know, as I said, kind of like the most of other government is changing. They changed this morning. They didn't change, you know. It it wasn't like Senator Engel Brexton went and did a day in St. Paul. And then at 5 o'clock tonight, he handed the reins over to Jordan Rasmussen. Jordan Rasmussen was sworn in this morning and took on business today. Regardless of what was old business that was addressed by the old council.
Thanks, Anthony.
So I would propose that we move the agenda around and do the sign of die. And let the new council be seated.
I just, I think you make some good points, and I want to just acknowledge the fact that the language is certainly anything but but clear as far as the way we've been conducting business, the way we've told the public that we've been conducting business. At our last meeting of this council, we clearly told the public that we would be if you remember, there were certain items on the agenda that we said, no, that is something for the new council. That is new business that the new council should take. The business on the agenda, we clearly could have accomplished that business December 31st. We put it on a regular agenda that's presented to the public in an orderly procedure that we would be completing that business. I also want to address the Charter Commission that you brought up because you're right. I think the Charter Commission is where this should be decided. They are not an elected body. There's no political interest on that body as there are between, you know, elected officials. And the Charter Commission, the Chair of the Charter Commission on Friday said in a in a response to City Hall, we have discussed this issue in the past. I believe, or I think the feeling of this group was the old council starts the meeting, conducting any old business, and then the transfer to the new council begins, which is the way the word outlined it. It's the way the agenda presented to the public says it. We will bring this item up at our meeting in April and lay out a more definitive process. I think that's the way to go. And again, I just want to clearly articulate because you're right. There's nothing on this 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 agenda. It can't be accomplished by the new council. It's simply that we have laid out a process to the public of how we're going to conduct our business. I think it's important that we follow that, that we be transparent to the public. And again, clearly, anything on this agenda, there's not one item that can't be overturned by the new council once they're sworn in and duly taken their seats. So with that, if there's any other discussion, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Under public hearings this evening, we have a public hearing for consideration of ordinance 34, 8th series, which is required shoreline management. Pardon me, ordinance updates. That just needs to be introduced this evening. And we need to have a pub. I'm sorry, it doesn't need to be introduced. We need to have a public hearing. So something like that, introduce the public hearing. Clara, could you please give an overview of this item before we open the public hearing? Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is coming back to your attention. We've been discussing this for several months now. But the DNR has required some updates be made to our shoreline management code. The language is before you in your packet. It has been looked over now also by the DNR. Any comments that they have made have been added as well. And also from the DNR is that we do need to hold a public hearing to ensure that the public has a chance to weigh in on the language. Just as a just as a background, what we are updating is to include all water bodies over a certain size within current city limits. And I do have a map available if you do want to see what all of those water bodies are. But we've been annexing land over the years that contain bodies of water that our city ordinance needs to account for. We now have a map showing exactly what those bodies of water are, which are also reflected in the code update. Also reflected in the code update are height limits of buildings, which are 30 feet. That's where we have. That's in our zoning code. That's now reflected also in shoreline management. We are also redesignating in in partnership with the DNR, redesignating the Pisgah Reservoir from what was initially known as a natural development to general development. So natural meant that there was a setback of 150 feet. Now that we can call it a general development, the setback for building there is actually only 75 feet. So that gives us a little bit more wiggle room. So that was something really nice that the DNR is working with us on. It also is updating our PUD section, Planned Unit Development. This accomplishes a few things. It provides us with it provides us with some more direction for developers if they're coming in and are interested in a planned unit development. It also removes the need for all of their plans to go to the DNR for approval because our language is already inclusive of what they want to see. So therefore, it just needs to go to the city engineer. It does not also need to go to the DNR for approval. So possibly saving some time down the road for some developers. So that's just kind of high level what the updates are in front of you. And as the mayor said, we do need to hold a public hearing on it. So if anyone has questions, comments, anything from the public, we will be happy to hear them.
Thank you, Clara. At this time, I would open the public hearing for ordinance 34, 8th series, which is required shoreline management ordinance updates. Anyone wishing to speak to this, please step to the lectern and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And at this point, it would be back to the council for a first reading of that ordinance.
I will introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Jim. There are no bids toward this evening under petitions and communications. We have a resolution recognizing the retirement of a longtime city employee. Whereas, I'm just going to read this resolution. Whereas Lori Beskey has submitted her intent to retire effective December 30th, 2022. And whereas Lori was hired as an accounting clerk on August 13th, 1984, and became the utilities billing technician on February 1st, 1996. And whereas Lori moved to the position of accounting technician on June 20th, 2001, a position she has held until the present time. Whereas Lori's unwavering commitment and dedication to the city of Fergus Falls has made her an incredible asset to the city for almost four decades. And whereas Lori's attention to detail, financial acumen, and professionalism have ensured accurate and timely reporting and earned her the respect of her coworkers. Now therefore be resolved by the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Lori Beskey and thank her for 38-plus years of dedicated service as an employee of the city of Fergus Falls. The above resolution was offered at a regular meeting by Councilmember Jim Fish, was seconded by Councilmember Krista Hagberg, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Before we say thank you to Lori, I'm going to call on Finance Director Bill Sonmore.
Well, on behalf of her department and the other city employees, really proud to have worked with Lori all these years. Don't do that. It's going to be hard. We struggle just a little bit, but really loved working with Lori and so proud to have worked with her. And she's taught Sandy and I a lot. So thank you so much.
I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to work for the city all these years. It was absolutely marvelous. Met and worked with many, many wonderful people. So thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Now, under the consent agenda, there are six items this evening in our packet, and Lynn is putting a copy on the board. If anyone would like to remove any of those items and discuss them individually, we can do that. Hearing not moved to approve it? Resolution to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Arnesson.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance 35, 8th series, dealing with the sale of THC products. This has been to committee. It's been discussed. We'll need a roll call at some point if anyone has any comments on the resolution, the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Arnesson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 Fish. Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number two would be a motion adding a $500 THC product sales fee to the 2023 fee schedule. I'll call our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, within the ordinance you just approved that calls for a $500 license fee on an annual basis for businesses selling the THC products, and this is just a motion memorializing that into the fee schedule.
Thank you for that. We can do that through a motion. Someone would like to offer that?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second.
Thank you. Caroline, any discussion? Questions for staff? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Item number three is a resolution opting out of Otter Tail County THC Product Sales Moratorium. And that would need to be required through a resolution. That's the point of the the ordinance is having the ordinance in place to allow us to do that.
You got a question on that? If if we adopted one, the county adopted that if you didn't have an ordinance in place by February 1st, then so why I was just wondering, why do we need a motion to say we don't, we're opting out when by the action we've just taken, we've we've actually opted out?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, in the language of the county's moratorium, it says cities that opt out must opt out by resolution. So we're just meeting the requirement of the county moratorium.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, if someone would like to offer that resolution? Thank you, Brent.
Second, second.
Second, Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $596,584.46. If there are any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director.
I have a couple of questions.
It's all up for the resolution.
Someone like to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Please, Anthony, go ahead.
I'm just curious on, we have a see, getting to see more and more of the Bayer body shop for towing. What what happens to those kind of like fees? How do we get reimbursed on the tow towing from Bayer, from Bayer?
Buyers.
Buyers?
Sure.
Buyers?
Yeah. So when the the police department tows a car, the buyers towing will bill the city. And then before we return the car to the owner, we will recoup the the complete tow bill plus we have some additional impound fees and and other fees. So I can't say that we get 100% of of the funds returned, but I would say we're probably in that, you know, 90, 95% recovery of of the fees.
But we still have the car if they don't come and pick it up?
Yes, yes. And then we and then we we do have to send a notice. I believe it's 45 days. They have a a chance to respond to the notice that we send, and if they don't respond within the 45 days, we in turn sell the vehicle. And even if the vehicle is salvage, typically, it's the salvage price is enough to recoup the tow bill. So 99.9% of the time, we're making the city whole through collections.
Thank you, Chief.
Let me add another couple of questions.
Yeah, please do.
I see Otter Tail Power Company, 2023 rental parking spaces, is that us paying them or them paying us?
Nope, that's us paying them for the lot across from City Hall to the east. Otter Tail Power actually owns that, and we then lease that for public parking.
Right, thank you. Then my other question was that I believe we have new under the Bigwood. Is it possible that we could get a presentation from the Bigwood Events Manager? So we can meet and greet them?
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely. And then we'll, yeah, give you a little history of where we're where we're at and where we're hopefully going.
That concludes my questions.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Anthony. So we have a resolution in a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yep, thank you.
Fish. Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There are no reports from administrative officers. There is no old or unfinished business. There is no new business to come before this body. So with that, I guess we would look for a motion to adjourn, sign a die.
I'd make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I would second.
Thank you, Jim. Before we call for that vote, I just want to recognize a couple of council members who will be ending their service this evening. I just want to say to Justin Arnesson, Caroline Gusterson, Krista Hagberg, and also to Scott Kwame, who will be continuing his service. The election in 2018, I believe, will go down in history as one of the most consequential in the history of our community. If you look at the amount of work that this body has done over the last four years by working together, I would put that on work against any four-year period in the history of our community. So for me personally, I think from the entire community, thank you for your service. And with that, I would call for a vote all in favor of adjourned, sign a die. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. I believe the new council members, if they would come down here, our city attorney is going to swear them in.
All right. I have your attention. Does anyone want to come and take pictures or anything like that? I will step out of the way. Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. I will support the laws and ordinances of the city of Fergus Falls. I will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member. To the city of Fergus Falls, state of Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God. Congratulations. And I'll get out of the way.
All right, and with that, we have our new council sworn in. And I would ask, roll call, please. We will call this meeting to order. Please, Lynn.
Here.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Fish. Joe.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business would be a motion to adopt the rules of procedure for city council, city code 31.27.
I'd make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Scott. We have a motion in a second. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to city staff. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Next item would be a motion appointing the 2023 acting mayor.
I would nominate Scott Kwame.
We have a motion nominating Scott Kwame.
Second that.
We have a second for Scott Kwame. Any questions, considerations before we vote on that motion? Yes, Laura, please.
Can I nominate Anthony?
We certainly, we have a motion in a second, so if we vote this motion down, then we would entertain a new motion, so. So right now, there's a motion for Scott Kwame in a second. If we vote against that, then we would be able to nominate a new member. So all in favor of the motion to nominate Scott Kwame as the acting mayor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
But yeah. Do we have a?
In favor?
Who voted in favor, say aye.
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 One, two.
I didn't vote. I didn't think I should.
So we have Jim, Scott. Jim, Scott. Well, what do you want to call me? It's four to four, correct?
Four to four.
Do I break that tie? Do we?
Was there four?
Is there four?
Did you not vote, Scott?
I didn't think I should.
So it's four to three then?
So that is four to three.
It's four to three, the motion carries. If it's four to three, fair? Yep. It was four to three in favor, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Anthony. Never throw your vote away, Scott. You never know when you're going to need it. Next item would be a motion approving the 2023 mayor's council appointments. There's a list in front of you. Should I just read through these? I'll I'll read through these. It's it's a short list. Board of Equalization would be Lord Job from Ward 1, Scott Kwame, Ward 2, Al Kramire, Ward 3, and Scott Rachel's, Ward 4. Representative Business Development would continue to be Anthony Hicks. Fire Department Relief Association would be a committee consisting of the fire chiefs, the city administrator, and Brent Thompson. Fire Department Trust Fund would be the fire chief and Scott Kwame. Representative to the Golf Boards, Jim Fish. Representative to the Hockey Association is Scott Rachel's. The Investment Committee would be the city administrator, finance director, assistant finance director, certified financial planner, and council member Al Kramire. Legislative Committee would be the mayor, the city administrator, council member Ruffer, and council member Hicks. Representative to the Pay Access Board is Scott Kwame. Personnel Committee would consist of Lord Job, council person, Lord Job, and council person Jim Fish. Representative to the Senior Citizens Board would be Councilman Brent Thompson. Tax Levy Committee would be the city administrator, the mayor, council, councillor Job, and councillor Rachel's. Representative to visit Fergus Falls would be Al Kramire. And Representative to the West Central Initiative Economic Development District would be council member Tom Ruffer. And we can approve that slate with a motion?
I'm over.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anthony. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Item number six is a would be a discussion on a resolution approving a state bonding request. And I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, new councilmembers, welcome. I look forward to working with all of you. The newly appointed legislative committee, myself, the mayor, Tom Ruffer, and Anthony Hicks, met last Friday. And we're going to try not to have any business this evening and jump right in, but the time is of the essence on this. So we figured we would throw you guys a big item on your first agenda here. So bear with me as I explain this, but some of you may know, the city of Fergus Falls was included in the bonding bill that stalled out at the state legislature last year. The bonding money that was set aside for the city of Fergus Falls was related to the project downtown Phase 2, which would have infused $1 million of non-moca money into that project. Over the last several weeks, MMB, Minnesota Management and Budget, has been reaching out asking how we want to handle that bonding request because they plan to try to advance that bonding bill during this legislative session in 2023. I informed staff at MMB that we actually moved forward with that project. We've awarded the contract. And the response that I got from staff at MMB was, well, do you want to amend that request and try to accomplish something else with state funding? So with that as the backdrop for the conversation, the legislative committee met last week to talk about whether or not we wanted to bring a recommendation forward to this council this evening. And one of the things that MMB talked with me about was trying to tie whatever new project we come up with into the project that was in the bill. And then the committee also wanted to include one-point-two million dollars towards the Renaissance of Old Smokey, which would include magic carpet lift, groomer, snowmaking, equipment, and a warming house as we look at recreational opportunities. So again, five-point-two million dollars, we have the fifty-fifty match with our Phase Two commitments locally, and I will say that if we move forward with this request, it's certainly up to the council as to whether or not they want to entertain this. This would not preclude us from asking for another bonding request or for any other legislative funds during this legislative session. This is different in the sense that they want to replace the existing language within the bill that's out there, and the reason the timing is of the essence is that MMB and the governor's office would want to include this in the governor's proposed bill, which is going to go out in the next couple of days. And it's not fatal if we're not in that bill, but it certainly helps, especially with the party, the Democratic Party being in control of all the branches. It's very likely they'll take advice from the governor as they craft this bill during this legislative session. So a little bit unique in that regard compared to what we've seen the last handful of years. So that's, that's what we're proposing. Also, the legislative committee, when we met last week, we talked about wanting to host an upcoming work session with the council to discuss legislative priorities of the city, other potential funding requests as we look at the state legislature with an eighteen-plus billion-dollar surplus, and then a deep conversation about roads, as that's obviously top of mind for everybody. So I'll stop there. Councilmember Hicks or Ruffer or the mayor, if they want to add anything, they certainly are welcome to, but that's the conversation we had.
Thank you, did a good job, but Anthony, would you?
I think as we, as we move forward on the dairy property, we were obviously unable to get the LCCMR grant from, from the state, so, you know, one of the reasons that kind of trying to use this matching dollars would be obviously to replace that funding to acquire that, that property. And rail crossings, to make that property feasible for development, you know, we, we really need, we have to have new rail crossings, and this is an opportunity to pay for that. So I think, you know, this is one way of leveraging the dollars that we spent downtown that, as Andrew said, are unaccom, unaccommoded, so I think it's a good idea, and then bringing back Old Smokey to life would be, would be, you know, a bonus.
Want to offer a resolution?
I will, I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Someone like to second that?
Second.
Tom, discussion council?
Scott.
Would this affect the RFP for the Port Authority, Anthony? I mean, you're the president of it.
Not really.
Is that going to be, is that money going to be included? Or the, if we have a, if we have a buyer coming in between now and into the session, will that include, or will you have that RFP before, I should say, before the end of session?
I mean, we were looking at the first Port Authority meeting of actually reviewing the RFP and pushing it out some.
That was just a question. Thank you.
And I noticed that that's one-point-three, and they initially went for one, one million on that property. Does that change the size of the chunk, or is it going to remain the same?
That's a good question, Your Honor. Councilmember Hicks, it matches the parcel that has been contemplated previously.
Okay.
And one-point-two million dollars is more than supported by the appraised value, and it allows us to make up some of that shortfall that we have on the property. So, you know, Bill is certainly excited to see that number go up from a million.
Thank you. Scott, thank you. Brent, any questions? Roll call, please.
Freymeyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe. Yes.
Quomby. Yes.
A resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I've got one, one other piece of business that I want to just bring up. It came to my attention that one of our councilmembers is, is under an administrative hearing, and I wonder if the charter commission can look into what, it must be like a rules, a code of conduct thing? You know, do we have to do anything? It's a, there's a public hearing on January the eighteenth regarding what happened during the election cycle.
Thank you, Anthony. I'll have to, I have a name.
I don't have any thoughts on that. As the charter commission weighing in on the conduct of a, I mean, there, there is a process for public review of a council member through a recall process as of a public hearing on the eighteenth. I know nothing of that.
The Campaign Finance Disclosure Board, I think, is the one that handles the complaints, and I think it's a state body that.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah.
That oversees that, and they're the ones that initiate any investigation. I, I believe that that would be the body that takes complaints and oversees any.
That, I was, that, that was brought to my attention. I was unaware of any public hearing on that. Then that's usually a process that's handled by the state, state administration, and there's a process of reviewing complaints, campaign complaints that are made by the public. And usually what happens is there's an administrative law judge that's appointed, that reviews and comes back with a determination whether the complaint sets forth sufficient facts to warrant a further hearing, further deliberations on. So I don't have any indication that there's been any formal adjudication by the administrative law judge.
So we don't need to necessarily do anything until that hearing takes place and a ruling is made?
To what extent it's public, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's probably a public request that can be made to the Department of Administration through, once the administrative law judge makes a, makes a decision. My understanding is, is that when a complaint is made, the administrative law judge has a relatively very short period of time to make a first determination whether the complaint sets forth sufficient facts for further deliberations or further review. And if the administrative law judge comes back with a opinion that they believe that potentially campaign laws have been violated, the administrative law will then give the person who is the subject of the complaint an opportunity to respond, and then they'll either probably have set forth some type of like hearing before the administrative law judge. So I, and I don't know if, I was aware that there was a complaint made, but I don't know where they're at in that process.
I mean, I was, I was told it's gone to, it's, there's going to be a, a public hearing about.
Thank you. Any other business to come before the council? If not, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Oh, yeah. Please, everyone, you're welcome to stay, and Lynn has.